I will call Councilman Roberts to lead us in the invocation. Follow up please.
Good morning. This is the richest father. First of all, we would like to say thank you. Thank you for bringing us up to this point here. Lord, we ask that you watch over us as we work through the business of this city. We ask you to watch over these people who have been designated to work in this city. Lord, we ask that you watch over each and every one of our citizens and employees. These people are on your own. Lord, we ask you to create a less extreme part of it. There'll be no ballots. There'll be no side, swiping backstabbing. Lord, as we go through the business, we ask you that you give granted all peace and understanding. Lord, when we leave this place, we ask you to cherish and embrace our heart and mercy. And that's our very sacred wisdom. Holy Father, our own, as well as the people of this world, give that amen. Please, Father, bless us. We have the presence of Jesus in our faith and in this city.
The divine of the United States of America. And to you, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with evergreen justice for all.
Will the court please hold the roll for the establishment of the law?
Yes.
Here.
Present.
Here, a quorum is established. Is there a motion of way of reading out the proof minutes of the office person?
Seven.
Is there a second? Will the court please hold the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, those minutes are approved, Mr. Arnett, other than the addition of the rebuild Alabama resolution to the consent agenda appearing as section F. Are there any other additions or additions to the agenda? With that, then I will move that we adopt the agenda as just amended. Is there a second? Will the court please? Will the court please hold the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, the agenda is adopted. Before we begin tonight, we've got a couple of, a few recognitions here. First of all, I do want to thank Gadsden State for being here with us tonight. We've got Dr. Kathy Murphy and Dr. Tara Simmons. We certainly appreciate the give back. We really appreciate the partnership with Gadsden State. You know, Ayers is a wonderful addition to the city. We spoke earlier about workforce issues that we've got and the ways that we can work together there. We certainly appreciate y'all being here. And wanted to specifically recognize y'all. And Dr. Murphy, if you'd like to say a few words, just want to welcome you.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and Council ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much. It's a privilege to come and just take a minute with you. We have just a small gift for you. Sorry, we did not put anything cool in that cup for you. We need it on a hot day like this. And by the way, we need some of those junk cars because we have some hot hoes at Gadsden State. We might want to try that hot hoe at the asphalt thing you were talking about. So, I need some of those. Mayor, and to the council, thank you so much. What a privilege to come. I've served in my capacity for the last two and a half years. I'm sorry it's taken me so long to come and have a presence with you, but I simply wanted to come and say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be here in Anderson with our Ayers campus. We are committed to the education of our community here. We're committed to workforce development. We know how critical and how important that is. And we just certainly want to come alongside and just be good neighbors and good friends and to serve this community in the ways that you do as to. By that, if there's something we can do better or do differently or support in different ways, we're all in. And we're committed to our Anderson community. It's just an absolute privilege to have a moment of time with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy, very much. Appreciate y'all joining us tonight. Okay, next, we've got really special recognition. A person I'm going to call Frasier Burrows, our Parks and Recreation Director. This, these are some organizations that have really supported and been in court for Youth Empowerment for Success program. So, Frasier, if I can, I'll just go ahead and call on you for that recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, Council, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to just give recognition of some groups and organizations that are very committed to supporting our Youth Empowerment for Success, Better Young and Yes Program. This is our 10th year. Thank you, thanks, Tim. All right. Thanks, y'all. Thank you for, for, for coming off the ground. And this is our 10th year of doing this. And we've been very fortunate to have several organizations that have been very committed to help us to provide opportunities for our deserving youth. So, they got to get them jobs with their skills that it would help them for to provide job opportunities, high school and now in the army to college. So, let me just, let me just use my name. I'm going to call up names of those individuals and those organizations again. After I finish, if you would please, we have a representative, I'd like for you to come up. We have something to present to you, okay? We ask the public library, we ask the museum guards, we ask the waterworks and football awards and girls' club, we ask the media, we ask the parents, and all these things. We do represent you. I don't, there's some, if you would, please come up. Ladies and gentlemen, we've got some off topic. This is a plaque here, which says, Use the Powerful Success, presented to each one of these organizations. In appreciation for your continued dedication to support of the City of Anderson's Yes Program. Thank you for investing in our community and making a difference in our community. This is what you do. Thank you all very much. If you could, please, we ask the public library, we ask the museum guards, we ask the waterworks and football, we ask the girls' club. We ask the media. And, you're here, Frasier. Dr. Martin's not here? Okay. All right. Listen, at this time, if you would, would you all have anything to say, please, for your?
I'll take it. Just come on in. I think Frasier started the calling. I thought, how many years has we been doing this? And when you said ten, I was shocked because I think we were one of the first organizations that accepted Yes Kids, Home Kids, and Young Ladies this year. This is one of the best programs, I think, that the city has. These non-ladies who come to us, some come, some get young men. We tend to get the young ladies are so wonderful to have. I think they grow a lot from the women through the summer because we treat them like our employees. We expect them to act like employees, do like employees. We give them the pleasure of hiring some of them to continue after the summers are over. As a matter of fact, we have one this summer that she will be coming back and working with us throughout the year. So, this is a great way for them to get their foot in the door, to get some experience. And I just thank you all for coming to this program, Forrest.
Like Theresa, I, I'll never give up the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Councilwoman Frasier, for the Yes Program, for the museum side. There's always work to be done. And we are an educational organization and institution, and we love being able to teach those how to work and what it takes to have a work ethic. And we've had some great kids come through the program, and they've learned a lot, everything from how to put the O's together and extend the O's even further to what's weed and what's flower. So, thank you again for the Yes Program and the continued support of this.
Thank you, Al. The Yes Program has been a huge success for the World Work Consumer Board. We bring these young people in. They do a phenomenal job. We have numerous people in our organization that have dealt with the kids through the years. We were one of the first ones, like the library, to get them involved. Kelly Bentley has been issue in making sure that these kids have what they need. It's been a great, great opportunity for the kids and for the organization. So, thank y'all very much. We appreciate it.
I also want to say thank you for what you're close to doing, and you're quite successful to support them, and they often live a few exits of them. And the good thing about this, these kids, some of the kids come here so close in age to some of the kids that you serve, but they don't like them, or older people can, so thank you, Al, very much.
Just a quick, y'all.
Come on, Joey. Yeah, Gadsden Staff, it's with you, if you'd like to. Okay, everyone, make your bill first right here. See, you're hot.
Okay, everybody, one, two, and three. Okay, real quick, everybody, ending, one, two, three, one, two, three. Boom. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks again, everyone, who does so much for the Yes Program. It's a very important program for the city and our community. We're very appreciative of all your efforts today. Okay, we do have a couple of board confirmation hearings tonight. The first will be for the appointment of the Club of Development Authority, and I will have Councilmember Roberts introduce his nominee, which is Chris Collins. Chris, keep good, come forward.
Well, first of all, this gentleman needs to go into the desk before he gets asked. He's served for, we're just the only team of leaders, you know, and you should know that. He has a very good work and knowledge of what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish. They really like him. Oh, that's it. So, God, I just want to say thank you for taking the opportunity, thank you for serving, coming back to serve in this board. We really appreciate it. Paul, if you need us, come back, and we know you're going to stay.
Listen, thank you, Councilman Roberts. And it is a pleasure to be back here in front of you folks this evening. Spend a few bad days with you in the back. I hope I can come back. As I told you, Mr. Fox, anytime I have the opportunity to build the backseat to have service in the back, I'll definitely do that. I don't take for granted that I took it in 1996. And I'm hoping as long as I can, as long as God gives me the ability, and I can be here and outside of work, and I appreciate the validation from the council to do not do the serving. Thank you, appreciate it.
Council comments?
No questions, like, really, because that's a very interesting question.
Thank you so very much for agreeing to serve in this position. You're very much making it, very much appreciating it.
You got a great job, Danny, with your choice. I couldn't think of anyone else that would serve any better than you. You've served in many capacities, even, you know, I would say, I think, a lot of this, but even on Anderson changers, you know, the things that you've done, the stories that have not been told, you know, we're super, super grateful. So, that was a nice much choice of yours.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Chief, I just want to say, you know, thank you for your willingness to serve. This is obviously a very important position for the city and the region, and I'm thankful that you're going to be there representing the city's residents, and I know that you will do so. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have an appointment for the Anderson Museum and Garden. Sean Crawford, could you come on up? The Museum and Gardens submits nominees to the city. Sean is a local real estate agent who is very active in the community, does a great job. Sean, we just appreciate your willingness, again, to serve here in this very important capacity. Obviously, you and the Museum and Gardens are a great draw for people to come to the city. And so, you know, again, we just appreciate your willingness to serve there. Welcome to the comments for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate all you do for our community, and I look forward to serving in this great community as well. I love the city of Anderson, so thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Any council comments?
I would like to say that Sean Crawford is a friend of mine, but I had nothing to do with it. He is a fine human being, and I cannot imagine anyone who would be more dedicated or work harder than Sean Crawford will. And so, anyway, thank you so much for agreeing to serve on this board.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
I would just echo this, and you're right, this is a wonderful one, and your place of best value to serve valiantly for a number of years on our, on our museum body and did an excellent job. And I was really worried when she indicated she didn't want to continue, that we wouldn't invite somebody as well, Susan, I think we have, and I appreciate your willingness to take the platform and continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Jenkins.
Well, Carl, I'd just like to say thank you for your willingness to serve. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. I've not had the chance to get to know you or meet you quite yet, but I've heard really great things about you, so I'm excited to see how you serve on this board.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith, and I look forward to getting to know you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to be heard as to either the nomination to the NDA or to the Anderson Museum and Garden? Both of these will be taken up in our council agenda tonight. So, there appear to be no one else who wishes to speak. I'll now close that public hearing on those two board confirmation. We do have a public hearing tonight on the city manager's proposed budget. Last week, a work session, we were providing, well, actually, a week ago, at our last meeting, we were providing the budget, had a work session on the budget last Tuesday. We will actually begin taking up the budget tonight, anticipate that we'll get it on the floor and then ultimately table it tonight. I don't believe that any amendments will be made tonight. I think that there probably will be at our next meeting. I know members are still working on these amendments now. It is a statutory ordinance during the process, how we ultimately adopt the budget. So, we'll have a series of public hearings if amendments to the budget, if any amendments are made, ultimately we can pass the budget by a date certain, next month. So, at this time, then, I will open the public hearing on the city manager's proposed budget, call on our finance director, Jessica Leonard. Do you want to just hit the highlights of the budget? And then we'll have an opportunity, if members are, if members of the audience wish to speak to the proposed budget.
Here's our overall budget process. Phase one, policy and strategy. Phase two, needs assessment. Phase three, review and development. Phase four, adoption and implementation. Phase five, monitoring and evaluation. Our budget considerations were the self-remedy increases for eligible employees to favor in our fund balance policy and capital outlays. The general fund revenue sources are from taxes, licenses, fees, and fines, charges for services, sale of assets, and governmental revenues, other revenues, and transfers in. We are proposing a total of forty-six point two six million for 2024. This is the percentage of each category that is designated to the general fund revenues, with taxes being the most at seventy-six point nine percent. This is our general fund budget overview, general government, public safety, public works, community relations, and citywide and outside agencies. The general fund expenditures by function is made up of general government, public safety, public works, community relations, citywide, outside agencies, and transfers out. We are proposing forty-six point four million in expenditures for 2024. The general fund expenditures percentages are public safety is the highest at thirty-six percent. Our other funds that we're going to highlight are museum operations, internal service funds, stormwater, fire attacks, and fire training, the gas tax funds. Our museum operations funds. The Museum of Natural History has a proposed budget of eight-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-and-six-hundred dollars. The Burton Museum at two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-and-two-hundred. Longleaf Botanical Gardens at two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-one-hundred, and the museum store at one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred. Liability insurance is proposed for fiscal year 2024 at seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Health insurance at four-million-and-forty-four-thousand dollars, and workers compensation insurance at two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars. Our stormwater fund has revenue and expenditures totaling four-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand proposed in 2024. Our fire tax fund has revenues and expenditures totaling one-point-one-million in 2024. We're proposing revenues and expenditures of one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand in our fire training fund. We are proposing four-and-five-cent tax at fifty-seven-thousand in revenue. Rebuild Alabama tax at one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand in revenue, and seven-cent tax at seventy-two-thousand-and-five-hundred dollars in revenue. Our capital outlay that we are proposing for 2024 are vehicles at four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars, equipment at three-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars and eight-hundred-and-two, three-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-two dollars, projects at six-hundred-and-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars, and facility improvements at three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. The total will be one-point-seven-five-million. And our next steps will be to adopt the budget, or changes were made at each initial public hearing. A second public hearing will be held, a third public hearing will be held, and our last day to adopt the budget is September twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Jess. Okay, then at this time, since we have a public hearing going on right now, does anyone wish to be heard as to the city manager's proposed budget? If anyone wishes to make a comment, please come forward, and just we'd ask you to limit your comments to the city manager's proposed budget. Does anyone wish to be heard at this time? Okay, there appear to be no one. I will close that public hearing. Again, I anticipate, process-wise, we'll actually begin taking up the budget tonight, as has been our practice in the past, anticipate that we will table it, and then probably have amendments made, hopefully all amendments made, at our next meeting, three weeks from tonight, on September fifth, and then in accordance with the laws Jessica just set out for us. Any amendments that are made and ultimately passed at that meeting on the fifth, there would need to be a public hearing asked to those amendments. And at this point, I anticipate that those would be on the nineteenth. And again, hopefully, we can make all those amendments on the fifth, so the budget can be passed on the nineteenth. Okay, Dave, we haven't even finished this. Okay, I will move, now that we adopt the consent agenda, with the addition of the rebuild Alabama resolution as section F. Again, this is the resolution, the housekeeping resolution that is required, such that we can expend some of those funds in FY twenty-four. So, with that, I will move that we adopt the consent agenda as just amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the court please hold the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, the consent agenda passes. Our first resolution tonight is one authorizing the expenditure of opioid supplement funds. This would be seventy-five-thousand dollars going to the Satcher Institute, the Satcher Clinic there, that will be located there in Glen Addie, for administrative support programs and services. With that, I will move for passage and adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion. During the court, please hold the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, the opioid supplement funds allocation resolution passes. Our next resolution tonight is one we just talked about on the budget. I will actually, I'm going to move for passage and adoption, ask for a second, and then in council discussion, I will move to table, so that when we get back on the floor on the nineteenth, at such time, hopefully amendments will be made, excuse me, for the fifth. Amendments will be made there and ultimately, hopefully, pass the budget on the nineteenth. So, at this time, I will move for passage and adoption of the city manager recommended budget for FY twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion. At this time, I will move that we table the budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the court please hold the roll on the issue of table of the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, our first, our, the city manager's recommended budget is tabled and will take it up again on September the fifth. Our first ordinance tonight is one that's on its first reading. I think it's one that we can go ahead and take care of tonight. It is, it is an ordinance declaring surplus, surplus real property and authorizing the lease of same. This has to do, again, with the, with a clinic that would be housed at Glen Addie. Is there a motion for passage and adoption?
Some do.
There a second?
Second.
Or actually, first, I need to, I'm sorry, it's on its first reading. So, first, is there a motion to read by title only?
Some do.
There a second? Will the court, and at this time, I'll call for a public hearing on the issue of reading ordinance by title only. Does anyone wish to be heard as to that issue? There appear to be none. I will close that public hearing and call for a vote on the issue of reading by title only.
Yes.
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 Yes, and again, this is an ordinance declaring surplus real property, authorizing the lease of same, having to do with the clinic to be located here at the Glen Addie Community Center. I'll move for passage and adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Is there, is there a motion for, since it's on its first reading, is there a motion for unanimous consent or is it taken up tonight? Is there a second?
Second.
Will the court please hold the roll on the issue of unanimous consent?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, unanimous consent, and we can take up this ordinance tonight. Is there a motion for passage and adoption? There a second?
Second.
Council discussion. I would move, first, in section two, amend, section two to read where the lease would be renewable every two years rather than one year. This is been going back and forth between Bruce and the other attorney working on this project. I'm making that amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the court please call the roll on my amendment for increasing to two years?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, so that amendment passes. Any additional discussion on the lease ordinance? Any additional discussion on the lease ordinance? Any additional discussion? Hearing no report, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, that ordinance passes. Our second ordinance is also one that is on its first reading, the one I believe we can take up tonight. And it is one with respect to stormwater. So first, again, this, this would be an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine and a half. Article one of the Code of City of Anson, Alabama, governing stormwater management regulation. Is there a motion to read by title?
Some move.
There's a second? This time, I'll call for a public hearing on the issue of reading by title only. Does anyone wish to be heard as to that issue? There appearing to be none, I will close that public hearing. And will the clerk please call the roll on the issue of reading the ordinance by title only?
Yes.
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 Yes, once again, then this is an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine and a half, article one of the Code of the City of Anson, Alabama, nineteen eighty-one, governing stormwater management regulation. Is there a motion for unanimous consent for immediate consideration? There's a second? Will the clerk please call the roll on the issue of unanimous consent for immediate consideration?
Yes.
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 Yes, unanimous consent having been granted, then I will move for passage and adoption. And again, what we just talked about in previous work sessions is relating to exemption for permanents and then enforcement. So I'm moving for passage and adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion. Hearing no report, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, the ordinance passes. So I don't know if there are any additional or other matters that come before the council. We have a public comment scheduled for tonight. Let's move on to council comments. Ms. Harris, let's start with you.
I just want to thank ALAMA for being here tonight. We have a event award with Anderson Public Library, just an incredible, incredible facility. The Anderson Museum and Gardens, you all are just, I mean, you're a rock. The Hope Southeast talks about Anderson Museum and Gardens. The Anderson Water Works and Silverboard, Ed John, you've always been so helpful. And every time I touch a project, I appreciate it. The Boys and Girls Club of East End, Alabama, thanks to you. And I know you do a lot for our youth in this community. The PDA for Care Center, Northeast Alabama. I'm not familiar with them, but I'm sure they wouldn't be listening if they weren't doing a hard job for our young people with the YES program. Thank you so very much.
You know, when people say our young people have nothing to do with this city, or that they don't have people that care for them, I obviously would beg to differ. As I was one of those YES kids not too long ago. So I just want to thank all of the entities who have been a part of, you know, making this YES program what it is today and offering these kids, I cannot refuse. Offering to these kids exposure and opportunities, because that's what really sets them up for success. They need to be able to see people in positions of power or in other entities that have love for them and care for them and want to offer them resources. So I just want to thank you all for being a part of that. And I promise, Ms. Teresa, I'm coming to visit the library as soon as possible. And Ms. Tiffany left, but I wanted to shout her out because she's so humble. She didn't make it up when you guys came up here. But she does a really good job with our Boys and Girls Club. And I'm just super thankful for the work that she does. And I really want our community to do better with participating in a lot of the programs that we have for our kids. Other than that, y'all have a great evening.
First of all, thank you for coming out. Really appreciate seeing the full house. I say it all the time when we have vendors. Oh, yeah, I can't call you vendors. When you come out to participate in city council meetings, that means a great deal to me. That over what Councilwoman Harris said, those organizations that have been listed, in the time you're doing something, you have the children in that area, you know, at some. So if there's anything I can do personally, please let me know. Also, same goes out to the Councilwoman who said. This is dealing with a lot of great, as you were the YES kid, I guess I would know for you. All I got to say today is, so, right now, across the country, we're having a game. We have a bunch of demonstrations to come for these storms. The heat index, I think, on yesterday was about a hundred and ten. Typically, I think by the end of the week, it's almost around one forty. Please check on your loved ones. Please check. I worked the other day, and they opened, lady at work, and she rushed him down, and she just opened. And her body started seize up, and I saw her eyes coming back, even though her head. She came back too, but just the magic, you know, no one had been there to see her going through that. So when you look at it, we have parents, and we have relatives who don't do right. We all got some. Please check on us, we should be able to. We currently have a cooling station that the city of Anson is providing for, helping provide. So there's help out there. People may be the one. Not going to east shore, I miss it.
I'd just like to say very quickly, thank you to this council. What a joy it is to work with this collection of individuals each and every day. I appreciate the dialogue, and I appreciate the genuine concern that we have for our citizens. And I appreciate the unvied efforts that we're making to improve our community. Thank you staff and boots on the ground that make our decisions real and implement the strategies that we put in place. Thank you to all of you that came out. I know you're here to be recognized for your contribution to the YES program. But when I look out at this audience, I, I, there's almost every single event that I go to that I see every one of these faces. So I, it, it's more than just a contribution to our youth and the power of them, teaching them how to be great adults. You, you show that not just by taking them under your wing through the summer, but each and every day of your lives, and we appreciate that. They are, our children are watching us, and it is up to us to provide an example worth following. So thank you all for your time tonight and for being here. Go with us.
I too just want to briefly thank all those entities who helped so much with the YES program and those folks representing those entities who joined us tonight. You know, that's a very important program, as has been discussed. It takes community support and involvement, and so we deeply appreciate y'all's support in this very important program. I also appreciate Chief Collins, Ms. Crawford, if y'all's willing to serve on these very important boards. You know, the issues that we face as a city, I've said this before, but, you know, we really all have to work together. And a big part of joining the team to work together on these issues is serving on boards and commissions. So I encourage everyone who has a heart to wish you a contact is about potentially serving on those. You know, we really do all have to work together, and again, that is an integral part of the process. Thank everyone else for coming out tonight, and those watching online. With that, I will move that we stand in adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you all.